Thank you, everyone. I apologize for being late. We had some previous meetings. But we will begin with item 1.0, Presentation, 1.1, Team of the Season, Spring 2014. Dr. Placel. I'd like to introduce Dr. Placel and Ms. Maranin.
I'm grateful to be here again this evening to present to you the Spring 2014 Team of the Season. We had hoped to do this at the end of last year, but we couldn't get enough of the boys together, and Kim had another engagement, so we needed to push it off until this time. So, the team we selected for this time was the Boys Volleyball Team, and so they're here tonight with Coach Maranin and Assistant Coach Mr. Moss, who's over there in the corner. We picked this team for a variety of reasons, but they're a very diverse group of guys, and they really hung in there, and they have made some great progress over the years. So, highlights for them this year is they were 9-10, and you might think that's not so impressive a season, but if you hear from where they came, you will know that it is quite impressive. The first year that they started out in 2008, they were 0-16. They started as a club team, and they played a JV schedule, and then for the next four seasons, they were 0-18. Finally, last year, they broke through and got some wins. They were 7-11, but they also had some heartache last year because they missed making the tournament by one win. So, again, they had made huge progress, but they didn't quite get where they wanted to be. This year, they did get that 9-10 record, and they did make the tournament, which was quite an accomplishment for them. We have often heard at Rockville High School, I do anyway, kids telling me that they're not going to continue to play for teams because they're not very successful, they aren't any good, what's the point of playing because the teams aren't winning. But clearly, this group has stayed together. They fought through all of that. We just put a quote up on the wall of one of the athletic department hallways that said, "Success is not final," it's by Winston Churchill, "Failure is not fatal, it's the courage to continue that counts." And the reason I picked this team is because they certainly have had that courage. So, we have some of the JV and varsity boys here tonight for you to meet. First, also, we have one of our managers, Kylie Carney, did a great job keeping the team together, helping them practice, keeping the score firm, and so on. And we'd like to just introduce some of the members of the team to you right now. And I left this guy to the end because it always helps if you have a superstar, and we certainly have one. He is one of the finest players in the state. He is an all-conference and an all-state performer. He's tremendously talented, but what impresses me the most about him is his dignity on the court, his positive attitude, his hard work, and that certainly matches his talent or exceeds that. This is Igor Bialik. So, again, thank you very much for allowing us to present these guys. Again, you can see it's, again, a very diverse group, but they have certainly stuck together. Kim Maranin is absolutely one of our finest coaches. She does everything right. She runs her team right. She keeps kids motivated. She keeps kids wanting to play. And again, I'd like to celebrate her as well as, again, being one of our outstanding coaches. Thank you very much.
Again, congratulations to all players, and we appreciate you representing Vernon. So, we'll move on to item 1.2, District Wellness Committee Report, Engineer Report, 2013-14.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher. Peter Johnson, a very, very active member of the District Wellness Committee, has come to deliver the Wellness Committee Report to you this evening. Dr. Andrews took over the committee last year after Mr. Peps had done it for many years. And so, Dr. Andrews was unable to make it at either of the meetings in, well, all three, the August or the two September meetings, so we really wanted to get this information to the board, and so Mr. Johnson agreed to share this information. Officer, over to him.
Good evening. The District Wellness Committee met on a bi-monthly schedule during 2013-14 school year. Additionally, some members of the council had the opportunity to attend several training sessions presented by Jerry Werman from the Alliance for a Healthier Generation. As a result of these training sessions, each school had formed its own school wellness committee, which in turn has made tremendous progress in the development and implementation of a variety of effective programs and activities for students, staff, and community. Tonight, I welcome this opportunity to highlight how good at these respective committees are few of those accomplishments and activities. Center Road School developed a heart-purposed marathon relay team comprised of students and staff, which for the first time joined Skinner Road School in this worthy event. Our hope is that eventually, other schools might also be able to participate in this event. Skinner Road School accomplished a Healthier Schools Bronze Award from the Alliance for a Healthier Generation, scoring bronze in all seven categories. These categories include policy assistance, school meals, improved beverage, health education, employee wellness, physical education, and student wellness. Northeast School and Maple Street School have provided classroom teachers opportunities to incorporate fitness breaks for students within the school day. Lake Street School and Skinner Road School have earned a Let's Move Act of Schools Recognition Award. This was accomplished by achieving bronze status in physical education and student wellness. Vernon Center Middle School continues to participate actively in Play 60 and relate to life, as well as to offer many fitness activities, clubs both during and after school. Rockville High School offers an after-school boot camp class for staff. In addition to these school-by-school recognitions, I'd also like to offer the following general observations. The district has achieved a bronze status for the Alliance for a Healthier Generation for the school lunch menu, has offered cooking classes and cooking nights at Maple Street School, Northeast School, and Skinner Road School, has been exceptionally popular for its fruit smoothie tastings for breakfast at all of the schools in Vernon. Many of our elementary schools offer after-school linear sports, participate in the Mayor's Club Fitness Challenge, and Charlie Chatterton's Vernon Schools Marathon, breaking the cycle of pop. The Parks and Recreation Department continues to support and offer fitness opportunities for our students, including the long-time event Cross Country Challenge held at Rockville High School. And these are just a few of the many activities and initiatives around the district and individual schools. In closing, the Wellness Council remains committed to examining the wellness policies of our district, and where applicable, will make corrections and improvements. We are also committed to finding new and engaging ways, not only to incorporate fitness, but making it a priority in the lives of all of our staff and students before, during, and after the school day, because wellness needs to be a way of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Peter? Thank you. Please tell the schools to keep up the good work. It's very impressive, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to 2.0, the Consent Agenda. 2.1A, approval of the minutes. Oh, no, all of them. 2.1A, B, and C. Sorry, do you want to make any motion? Mrs. Fisher? I move we accept the consent agenda. Is there a second? Mr. Kepes? Anyone want to pull any of these items? Okay, all of those in favor? Ms. Maranin, please. Now, we'll move on to item 3.0, Secretary's Report. Opportunity for Board of Education to add or delete agenda items. Does anyone wish to pull?
I request that we amend Agenda Item 5.2, the Teacher Administration Evaluation Data Report, to include, also include, the data collection system.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Kemp? Any questions, comments, discussion? All of us in favor? Ms. Maranin, please. Anyone else wish to add or delete an agenda item for this evening? Mr. Kemp?
Before this evening, yes. For the next meeting, yes, if that's permissible. I would appreciate it if the board would have a discussion of the class size report that was included in our information packet in tonight's package.
So, you're making a motion to put that on our agenda for our next meeting?
Yes.
Is there a second for that? Mr. Hill?
Second motion.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Ms. Maranin, please. Thank you. I'll add that to our agenda next time. And any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to item 3.2, Rockville High School Student Representation.
Hello. So, so far, I think the year's gone fairly well. Athletics are looking all right. Soccer's looking pretty good, and football's giving its best. I'd say mostly this year's gone off without a hitch, with a few problems concerning some new policies, but I think that's in the works to be smoothed over and in-house, I guess, is what we'd say. So, overall, I'd say this year has gone fairly well so far, no major problems. People seem to be transitioning fairly easy. And today was an interesting day for a few of us because we started the Goodwin College Senior Academy Program, in which I believe there are four of us at Rockville High School who now every Monday and Wednesday go to Goodwin College to take classes there for free. So, not a lot of people got in, so I think there's 80-something people in the program as a whole. So, to have four people in there from our school is pretty special, I guess, and definitely a positive thing for people that are involved. That's all.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Erin? Thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to item 4.0, Community Forum. This is an opportunity for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the boards from citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Please state your name and address.
My name is Sibby Kristoff. I'm at 95 Trout Stream Drive. I have a fourth grader and kindergartner at Center Road School, and they've had a great start to the new year, which is wonderful. I said two things that I wanted to mention. First, it's kind of minor, but it leads to a communication issue. The school supply list that's put out by the town on the website ahead of the start of school, parents who are looking for that sort of thing, we kind of bounce around getting everything pulled together for the beginning of the year, and then during the meet and greet at the school the day prior, the teacher's message is that they're not allowed to ask for any supplies, that they weren't, some of them weren't aware that the list was out there, but that was kind of the same message we got from both teachers, was that they're not allowed to ask for supplies. So, I just wanted to point that out as far as communication back and forth, it's a little mixed message. My second thing is a little bit more a safety issue. I know that we have known issues at Center Road School with the parking situation, and as I mentioned, I live on Trout Stream Drive, so we are, the intersection of Trout Stream and Center Road is an unofficial drop-off and pickup spot for students. I'm on the Safe Routes to School Committee, so we are definitely working on long-term solutions. Today, the town started construction at the end of the road, so we're now down to one lane, no sidewalks, and there's heavy construction equipment and gravel piles at the end of the road, and I'm dreading drop-off and pickup tomorrow because I don't like to be a Debbie Downer or a, but something's going to happen. People go way too fast through there, past Center Road. Our wonderful crossing guard, Mr. Keenan, had an issue with a car last week, and I know there was a police officer there for one day, so I don't know if it's possible to have an officer there in the, just again, 15 minutes or so in the morning and afternoon because I just foresee, at least a bad traffic jam up, but at the worst, something happening as far as an accident or worse. So, that's all that I wanted to bring up, so thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you very much for sharing that with us. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? Okay, we will move on to item 5.0, Curriculum. 5.1, Results of the 2013-14 District and School Improvement Plans and 2014 CMT Cap Science Deck. Board members have received an entire packet of information. I'm sorry the graphs were not in color, so that certainly makes it more difficult with the line graphs. The last two pages, at least in my packet, so I'm assuming in your packet, were in the wrong place. The second to last page should be the first page in the Lake Street Plan, so that needed to be moved, and the last page was the second to the last page in the Center Road Plan. So, they both belonged right in the middle, so I'm just assuming that was a set of papers that was just misaligned, but I'm sure you'll be able to figure that out. So, I just wanted to highlight a few of the things in there. All the principals are here with us this evening, and they'd be very happy to answer questions. I was at one building-level team leadership, leadership team meeting today, listening to them discuss their goals for this year, so that conversation has already started. I know Dennis Burt was also at a faculty meeting today where things like that were being discussed. So, two of the things that we have looked at, you know, that reading at or above grade level on grade three is the key to success for the rest of your school career. So, you can see on the right-hand side, you have grade three. Overall, it has moved up incrementally. It's certainly nowhere near where we want it to be. It is at 77 percent, but still, that means just about one out of every four of our students is not reading on grade level, and that is not acceptable. So, we are working very closely on it. If you look at the two graphs together, the one on the left is the kindergarten data from the last four years as well. And so, you can see, as we've raised the bar, the children have met the bar. The children in the bright blue graph all the way to the right of the screen are the same children in the purple graph all the way to the left of the screen. So, those children in the blue bar who were in kindergarten in 2011 are in third grade in 2014. And so, you can see that they are learning at high levels. I can imagine, and I really hope to imagine, the purple bar from the kindergarteners this year, or this past year, where they might be in three years when they are in third grade. So, I think this says a lot of really good things and a lot of hope for the future in terms of that. Another thing to highlight, and this is a graph you've seen several times before, and this is the kindergarten Fonda Simpsonell reading level. So, this is also over the last four years. You can see that the district, which is the blue bar that is somewhat in the middle, the fourth one down, the third one up, you can see that overall, there has been an increase in the district in the last four years. Additionally, you can see Maple Street was just the purple one, which is the top bar this past year. As I said earlier, when I met with the teachers a week or so ago, that at Maple Street, they have truly focused on reading and kindergarten. They know that we have to have our children reading on grade level starting from the earliest years. And you can see a couple of the other lines might be a little bit flat, and so those schools are certainly focusing on kindergarten as well. The interesting thing is we have moved the bar every single year. So, in 2011, we were very happy if children were reading on an A or B level. The levels go A to Z. In 2012, we moved the bar to a Level C. In 2013, also a Level C, but all three of those years were at the instructional level. So, if I was teaching you to read at instructional Level C, then that's the level I would score you at in this graph. We've changed that, and this year, we are only counting the independent level, which is a higher bar. So, this is one that you already mastered, not the one you're learning at. And so, you can see overall that the achievement did increase as well in kindergarten. This is the grade three bar, and you can see the school's broken out. That's, the first two bars were district-only. These two graphs are by school. And so, you can see, it's not where we want it to be. In fact, some of the schools have actually gone down over the course of the years, and third grade is that year where you change from learning to read to using reading in order to learn other things. And so, it is very, very key that by the end of that grade, we are where we need to be. Another concerning thing about this graph, as you can see, in 2011, the graphs were a little bit closer. 2012, they were even closer, but we now have a spread between our schools, and so this is something that we're truly working on, and our coaches are working on as well. Science, we did just receive our Connecticut Mastery Test scores and our Connecticut Academic Performance Test scores back from the state. And you can see that overall, the grade five scores have risen a little over four years. The grade 10 have also risen a little, at least they've continuously gone up. Grade eight has not. I would say that's gone down overall. You know that that is an area that we are working on right now for revision, and I'm trying to remember which grade levels we finished revisioning. We've done a few at the high school, and I think we have not gone down into the elementary. We finished English Language Arts and Mathematics, and we've done some science, very little science mostly at the high school, and no social studies. So, those are the areas that we're working on right now, and this will make a huge difference. These are our CMT and CAP scores across the district. This was Writing. We did share the Writing with the whole district, again, with the teachers. This was the end-of-year percent of students at goal on our new Writing Rubric. I happened to be at the middle school today and heard the Language Arts Department head speaking about grades six, seven, and eight. Very impressed. They have finished their assessments in all three of those grades, quarterly assessments, and they feel that they're completely aligned, and so their data at the end of this year will be very consistent and very telling as to our students. So, they're very proud of that, and I look forward to seeing that data and that growth as the year goes on. So, we'll report that after each quarter to the board so you can see the growth as the year goes on. This was baseline data. Last year, we just started with our new rubric and our process Writing, so this is all our first year in that data. And remember, this is our data because we don't have CMT or CAP data in Writing. Very simple graph, and we've spoken about this before, but I wanted to do it in a line rather than a bar. I'm hoping this will continue to go up, and at the current rate is fine. This is the Algebra I Pass Rate. We required two years ago that all students take a minimum of Algebra I in eighth grade. We provided intervention last year for Algebra I, and so you can see for 2014 that that rose even more. Mr. Rocket has a course this year that is a combined course, so there were a number of students identified, one section of students, approximately 20 students, who are actually taking Mathematics every single day this year as opposed to every other day in our A-B schedule, so that by the end of the year, they will have complete success in Algebra I, and that foundation will be built for the future. I think that might be the last one. Yes, it is. As I said, all the principals are here, and I'm sure they would be very happy to answer specific questions about the plans. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, it's an observation. I could put it in the form of a question, but basically, what I want to say is that I appreciate the improvement that has been made in many cases. So, moving on from that, I'd like to request that the structure of the reporting that is given to the board be a little bit more consistent than what I see here in the packet as an example. I believe it's Maple Street, which includes the results in science, but it's the only one that does. There is a report that shows the five-year, year-over-year results in referrals to the office from Maple Street, but I don't see that. And not only is it that, but it breaks it down by, I think it's by month. So, that, looking at a five-year trend in an elementary school is great, but it's the only one that displays it that way. Others refer to the improvement in that area. There's one that went from 500 referrals to the office to 100 and something, and that's a good result. But again, I don't see that in each of the other schools. So, if I could, I would like the principals in the elementary schools to look at each other's reports and pull the best practices out of each one so that you see what someone else thinks is important for the board to know and possibly include it in your written documents to us. It just helps us get a better feel for what's happening, and that's all I want to say there. Thanks.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? I do agree with David. It's very hard to interpret. Each school's reports are so different. We try to make our district's school improvement plans consistent. I think the way we report the results should be consistent as well. All right, no other questions on that? Thank you very much, everybody. Go on, Carter. We will move on to item 5.2, 2013-14 Teacher and Administration Evaluation Data Report and Data Collection.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Each year, beginning this year, we are to report out to the Board of Education by September 15th, the number of teachers rated as, and the names are changing this year, so the current names would be exemplarily proficient, developing, and below standard. And so, we must report that out, the number of teachers who scored that way at the end of June, and then any that changed over the course of the summer. When the new S-Back testing will come in, there is an opportunity for the evaluator to go back in and, based on student learning outcomes, to change the bucket that the teacher's results fell into. So, we are reporting that out now to you. Additionally, as Mr. Hull asked for the motion to be amended a little while ago, we are to report out, and I don't know if that's this year only, but we are to report out on the tool that we're using to measure the teachers, the evaluation tools. I'll turn this over to Mrs. Ward.
Thank you very much. Through the, you can see through the results here, this is a report here for administration and for our teachers. I can answer any questions on that if you like. We did discuss the rubric that was existing in our previous plan, and we're going to report out shortly on the rubric that we're using for our, the progress on the rubric for the administrators. I can answer any questions before I move on to the data collection report.
Mr. Kemp?
I'd just like to understand what shortly means. What do you have in mind, reporting out shortly on the administrators?
I believe it's the next Agenda Item.
Next Agenda Item.
Oh, okay.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, Mrs. Fisher. You can hardly argue with the numbers that are represented here, but we have teacher coaches who are helping teachers across the district with their classroom atmosphere? I'm not sure if the right word is. Management, say it again. Climate, yes. Classroom climate. That's not part of developing a teacher's strength so that it just doesn't get reported here? I guess I'm surprised that there are no developing staff, that everybody's either exemplarily proficient.
As we discussed at the last meeting, that was the function primarily of the rounding up form of the matrix. And to be more specific, in terms of the classroom climate, that's one domain, and at the time last year, out of five domains, that would be rated, and then lumped in together, put into a formula, and then put put into a formula, and then put into the matrix. So it was filtered down into that matrix. It was part of the weighting system. It was just farther down the equation.
So these results just support the argument that the system, the rounding really isn't, doesn't give us an accurate picture?
I would say we're going to be able to gather much more data this year.
Okay. Thanks.
And, talking about that, I'm sorry. Last year, we used a free product that was purchased by the state. It was called Bloomboard. And we went through that process for the year. It was a system where teachers and administrators both logged on and it collected every aspect of every meeting, goal-setting conference mid-year, end-of-year, as well as any pre- and post-observation, as well as observation data. The feedback that I received and the evaluation committee received, both from administrators and from faculty, was that it was very, very difficult to use in many cases. There are some upsides to it, that it is a nice place to collect information, but the actual structure of the website got in the way of actually meeting with teachers, I think is the best way I would describe it. That there was so much time spent on just the mechanics of the website that you couldn't actually, it really was putting pressure on administrators and teachers to get all this information uploaded into the system. So this summer, we proposed an alternative. And if we look at the legislation, we don't have to collect all that material. In reality, we have to collect this summative evidence at the end. But we want something sort of in-between, rather than just doing this or doing a paper sort of collection. So what we've done is we created an in-house collection for results of any kind of meeting. You can put in notes for any kind of meeting. And then for any kind of observation, you would put in more of the summative results of that meeting. In other words, each observation, there's a rubric called the CCT in which you would rate evidence for that observation. And essentially what the administrator would do is they would put in the ratings for that and then they would put in more of the summary information at the end of it where you would put in commendations, recommendations, and next steps. You'd print that out. You'd have a signed copy for both the teacher and for the administrator. And then all that information would be collected centrally. So when we showed it to administrators in the summer, they felt it was much easier to use. But again, there's some pluses and minuses to it. It's not a document storage selection, so you can't actually put in, let's say you have a lesson plan. In Bloomboard, you could upload that lesson plan as a teacher. And then I, as an evaluator, could look at it. It's all in one place. So each administrator is going to have to decide how they're going to collect that information. Some have decided they're going to use actual folders and the teacher's going to email it to them, they're going to print it out and put it in folders. Others can use virtual folders on their computer where the information will be emailed to them and all stored for each teacher. But even with that, I've heard through the initial goal-setting conferences that it's been a much far easier process and they can focus in on, which is what we really want them to do, focus in on the interaction between the observer and the administrator. Because that's really the key. This is how we grow teachers, this is how we help kids. So hopefully through this process, we moved the mechanics out of the way and we've moved into more about teaching and learning.
Anybody have any questions?
I only have one. Why wouldn't they collect it consistently, either online or by paper? Why would each administrator do it the same way?
Realistically, it's up to them how they best manage their own resources. And from a district perspective, we only want to collect that high-level information with the results of each of those meetings, with the results of the observation. How they manage that is up to them. Now, remember, prior to Bloomboard, that was how the system was done. We didn't collect anything, from what I understand, in my previous district as well. We did not. We only collected the end-of-year rating for each teacher. Now we've got sort of a middle ground where we're not collecting everything on the assignment, but we're not just collecting one piece. We're in the middle. So we're going to see how it works.
Thank you. Mr. Burt?
Just to follow up on that question, is there any type of an audit that's done at a higher level from the senior levels of our administration at the process and looking at the documentation ever? Or is that never referred back to? From a document storage perspective, how would you, if anybody audits, how would they go about doing that?
Not sure. From the state level or from our level, looking at administrators' observations?
Internally, if we want to see what we're collecting, to see that we're doing things consistently, just from an internal, how are we doing to make sure that it is consistent?
We collect every observation that's made. So if the teacher, if the administrator scripted it, we don't collect the scripting, because it's very messy to read anyway. But we collect the observation, so what the lesson was, what the commendations, recommendations, next steps would be about that lesson. So we've always done that. We did that this year. We will continue to do that. So there's nothing less that we would be collecting. The end-of-year is fully, it doesn't just say that the numbers that are in this report, which is what the state wants, it has the end-of-year summative conference. So it will say what the strengths and weaknesses are, where the teacher needs to improve, what the next steps are, and those kinds of things. So is that the concern? Additionally, and we're doing this right now, in fact, we have Administrative Council Wednesday. So Mrs. Simon, who happens to still be here this evening, Mrs. Simon had volunteered to have her practice videotaped. So we videotaped a teacher with Mrs. Simon in the classroom observing her. And so all of the administrators have watched this video and were coming to the meeting prepared with our notes as well. And this is helping us learn coaching conferencing in a better way. And so we're going to be having a small group discussion about what would be the follow-up questions that we would ask the teacher, how would we lead the teacher to learning at a higher level? So I'm actually coaching Mrs. Simon and Ms. Trentolo. And so I will be looking at all of their observations, their classroom observations and having those conferences. So while Mrs. Simon's giving the whole group an opportunity on Wednesday to have small group discussions and learn about our practice and how we might up that practice using her teacher as an example, then when Mrs. Simon and I get together, she's also been videotaped in her post-conference. And so I will watch that with her and then I will give feedback on that as well. So we're trying to up our practice and improve the way we do business and the way we grow teachers. And so it's our job to help principals, the central office to help principals, and the principal's job to help teachers. So that's how we're trying to do that. So that's a longer answer, I think, than you wanted, but we're trying to do as much as possible in that way.
Thank you. I like to say, the documentation that we're talking about, that we're storing, it sounds like it's more of our backup information, not necessarily anything evaluatory that we want to go back and review. It's not, it's a supportive documentation.
In Bloomboard, that's correct.
And the things that we're putting into folders or electronic email, that is not all consistent. The storage of the backup, that's all it is.
Yes, the documents that are the results that will be evaluative, that are the result of uploading the things, the handouts for the class, the lesson plan, all of those kinds of things, the result of that is consistent. We use the same forms, they come to central office, they file in the teacher's file. So those are all consistent.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bush?
Very happy to hear that you have looked for an alternative to Bloomboard because Bloomboard was quite a struggle last year with many other districts. And just to kind of get an idea, I like the idea of not having to upload all that stuff onto a site because we spend more time having to upload it. And it almost made us not have as much evidence because it was such a struggle to do it. I think we're going to see the teachers more freely have evidence to show at their meetings without having to do all the rigmaroles of showing the evidence to support their lessons and everything else. So it doesn't matter how they are going to store it. It's more like, there's a lot of evidence and there's a lot of data that they can put together to support good lessons and their abilities as teachers. So that's what I'm hoping to see with the change in an in-house system. Something has to be better than what it was last year. So, good job.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 5.3, Update on Administrator Evaluation Plan for 2014 and '15.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher. At the last meeting, the administration asked the board to approve the Administrator Evaluation Plan. There were two of them. Both of, one was the exact same plan that was used in 13-14. The other was the same plan with a little bit added into it, and that was inquiry cycles, at least one in the fall, at least one in the spring. So those are the plans we had asked to be approved. The board asked about the matrix that gave the final rating. In the matrix, it's a four-by-four matrix, and so you get a 1, 2, 3, or a 4 in student outcomes, which is your student achievement. That includes student outcomes and teacher effectiveness, two areas that go into one, that's 50%. The other that you get a 1, 2, 3, or a 4 in is practice. And there is a rubric that teachers are rated on across six, five areas of the rubric, sorry about that. And so the, and another part of that is stakeholder feedback. So that's worth 5%, the rubric was worth. I've got that backwards. The rubric that was worth 10% or was worth 40%. So that's the other 50% of this. So when you have two numbers that are even numbers, 4 and 4, 2 and 4, even two numbers that add to an even number, 1 and 3, 3 and 3, you get the average of the 2 and it comes out to an even number and gives a relatively reasonable rating. When you add two numbers and you get an odd number, so you have a 3 and a 2, or a 1 and a 2, or something like that, or a 4 and a 3, then you have a decision to make. And the decision on the seed rubric was always round up. So if you had a 3 and a 2, a 3 being proficient, 2 being developing, you add them together, you get 5. You divide by 2, you get 2 and 1/2. And so in the seed rubric, the state-developed rubric, it's a round-up model. And so the concern that we heard from the board last week, last two weeks ago, was that that does not account for that half of the rating is developing and half of the rating is proficient. And so to say that the entire rating should be proficient did not seem fair to the teacher, to the district as well. And so after the last meeting, we have met three times with the Administrators Union. We met immediately after, the following day after the board's meeting in August. And just to brainstorm some ideas, we then met last Friday after we had come up, earlier than that, after we came up with some ideas, Mr. Burt and I. And then we met again today to share those ideas. And the reason we met today was that on Friday, we did have a conference call with the State Department of Education. We had the Chief Talent Officer, Sarah Barzee. We had two other people, Sharon Fuller and Kim Wachelhausen, who have the say and the commissioner's ear. And so we wanted to know what would follow the guidelines for education of the five ideas we came up with. And if any of these were palatable to the union, we would then be bringing them back to the board to share. And so we're at that point now, not ready to share. The union will be meeting, I think their whole union is meeting, not this week, but next week. So we will be ready to come back to the board at the following meeting. We're not asking for a decision this evening. So just to give you an idea of the five ideas that we talked about, the first one was, it looks like a rubric. And it is, has four single-line rubrics, four boxes, 1, 2, 3, 4, from the plan. And so the idea would be, all right, you have a 3, a 3, a 3, and a 2 in all of these. Well, obviously, that's not a 3, so you're a 2 because you haven't gotten 3s in everything. So that's an all-or-nothing kind of model. I don't think the administrators were too fond of that model. It didn't recognize. And it also allows something that's really only worth 5% of stakeholder feedback or a teacher effectiveness to trump really good work in terms of student achievement and teacher practice. So the second was, Mr. Burt developed a, just a single-bar, an Excel input sheet, I'm not sure what it's called. And you just, we kept putting numbers into it and he listed cut scores. And again, there was a point where it rounded up or it dropped down. And so, and it was also kind of the man behind the curtain because you'd put in a 3, a 2, a 3, and a 3, and all of a sudden it would be this. But you put a 3, a 3, a 2, and a 3, and it would be this. So it was not transparent to everyone. So those two models came off the table relatively quickly. The other three models all use the matrix. The first would be the model that you've already seen, and that is the round-up model. So when you have a 2 and a 3, that matrix says that's a 2.5 and it rounds up to 3 and it gives you a proficient. Another model would be to truncate that 0.5. So you have a 2 and a 3, it's not a 3, so it goes to a 2, and it's now going to give you a 2 rating. So those are the all-and-nothing buckets. The middle bucket, the middle matrix, is the one that the state actually started with three years ago. And in that case, they relegated, when it was a decision-making rule, they relegated student achievement to trump or to be higher rated than teacher practice. And so if you have a 3, so it's only when you have the odd numbers, only when it's a 3 and a 2, or a 1 and a 2, or a 3 and a 4. It is not when the two numbers come together and they divide by 2 and you get your rating. So if you had a 3 in student outcomes, so your students were achieving at the proficient level, but you had a 2 in practice, you would end up with a 3 because student outcomes are more important. If you had a 3 in teacher practice and only a 2 in student outcomes, you would end up with a 2 because student outcomes are more important. So it's not an all-or-nothing, it's a decision-making rule. So we spent an hour on the phone just to see, would any of the ideas that we had, we gave all five ideas to the State Department, would any of them be an idea that would still follow the guidelines where we wouldn't have to get a waiver because the waivers were due in the spring? And so we wouldn't have to get a waiver from the state and we would still be following what we need to follow. They agreed that the three matrices all follow the guidelines. So the one that was in the seed model, four, truncating, so if you have a 2 and 1/2, you end up with a 2, truncating the 0.5, just taking it off, rounding down, in other words. And then our decision-making rule. They said, yes, in all three of these cases, each side, practice and outcomes are both worth 50%. They come to the matrix and then you, there's a decision-making rule if it doesn't add up. So they were agreeable with all of those. Mr. Burt and I did share that the decision-making rule, the number 2, the last one I shared with you, the one in the middle, is certainly one that we thought more fully explained or demonstrated a teacher's ability to get kids to learn because that is the more important. So I know, as I said, that the administrators are meeting a week from, not this week, but next week. And so we may bring that back to you. The state did say, as I said, it's too late for a waiver, but we certainly can put that, a change in the matrix in this year. As an aside, I'll let Mr. Burt add if he needs to. This is a plan we're working on this year. We all know it. But we want to change the plan too, not just the metrics at the end, not the mathematics or the calculus at the end. So, Mr. Burt, did I leave anything out there?
Just the one thing that we did confirm, that we do have to pass one of these plans.
Yes.
This fall.
We do, we do. We need some plan.
One of them. Well, the plan is passed, we just have to pick a rating scale.
And the state would approve this decision-making rule?
Yes, all three of them actually have decision-making rules. The first, the one that is in the seed plan, the decision-making rule is when you have 2 and 1/2, you round up. The other one is when you have 2 and 1/2, you round down. And then the third one is a little more complex. So if the higher number is outcomes. Yes, it's just a decision-making rule. It still brings everything together as it was.
So you'll bring this back to us at our next meeting after you talk to the administrators?
And truly, we've only shared it with the two union heads. So they're sharing it and it will be available to confer as well. But I think that in some way addresses the board's concerns. It does say what we feel is important, student outcomes, as opposed to, you know, teacher practice.
Mr. Stansel?
I'd like to ask Mr. Burt.
Mr. Stansel? Mr. Stansel? Mr. Stansel?
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe this is a simple question, but why can't a 2.5 just be a 2.5?
The, it's a four-point rubric, so if you're a 1, you're developing, you're below standard, if you're a 2, you're developing, if you're a 3, you're proficient, and if you are a 4, you are exemplary. And we have to report those four ratings, and only those four ratings to the state.
Mr. Kemp.
Okay. We have to pass a plan. And, Mr. Burt, well, I guess I'll ask, what if we don't? I gotta tell you, I am not in favor of rounding up, and I'm not in favor of truncating downward, but in the world I live in, 1.5, you end up in the first bucket, 2.4, you end up in the second bucket, 3.3, you're in the third one, and whatever. But this is really ridiculous. I mean, I appreciate the work you're going into it, but for the state to say that you've got to have a plan, and I'll get to the question of why you're going to the union, which is to get buy-in and advice and so on, but don't tell me they have a right of refusal.
All evaluation plans must be done with union representation at the table. And so the plan that comes out of, from the table, generally, has union agreement to it, with it, to it.
Well, I think they should be consulted and so on, but I don't think it's appropriate that they have right of refusal on any of this.
The board does get the final say, that is correct.
Okay. But having said that, this kind of page that we have here, I don't ever want to see again. As Paul has said, a 2.5, that's a 2.5. You cannot deliver this to the community, to the world, where zero people end up in developing and zero people end up in below standard.
We do not disagree with you in one way at all.
Well, then, if that's what comes back to us ultimately, I won't be voting for it. I'd rather not vote no, I'd rather abstain or take no action. But if the result of all of these discussions ends up with this being the inevitable result, I won't be voting for it. So I appreciate the fact you're going to come back to us again, and it seems like there's been some constructive dialogue. But I just want to say, in all fairness, this cannot happen again.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Putting the numbers in perspective about the chart that Mr. Kemp had first alluded to, and obviously, the zero populations in the developing and then the below standard, in a world of bell curves, what would be a reasonable expectation for the numbers in developing and low-skinned, based on our current staff levels? If it worked as planned and not, with this model, it doesn't seem to tell you much of anything.
I would be surprised to have more than one person in below standard, because generally, we wouldn't be doing our job if we had people who were below standard. We have a 90-day window prior to, when a teacher is hired, no matter how many years' experience they have, coming to us. There's a 90-day window, which is not until Thanksgiving, where we can just say, thank you very much, you don't meet up to our standards. They're not considered a teacher until they have hit after 90 days, 91 days, with us. And so if a teacher is that poor, and we have not walked them to the door, shame on us to have someone there. Is it possible for a teacher to fall into that category? Yes, I would think they were having extreme supports to be in that category. So I would be surprised to have more than one, if one, person in the below-standard category. In the developing category, we have brand-new teachers, and certainly, it's acceptable to be in the developing category in your first year. Not in all areas, I would think, that you should have some areas that you're pretty good at or proficient at. In year two, maybe one developing at the most, and year three, there should be no developing. And we have that, teaching has a four-year probationary period. And so if we have not done our job in four years, then we're, we're really, well, we're not doing our job. And so it's very important to make sure that teachers, we only keep the very best teachers. Just as an aside, I will say we have outstanding teachers, but we also may have staff that under, under this type of activity might not have stayed with us. And so we could have a tenured teacher who is developing, and they would be put on a very short leash to become proficient. And if they remain there for more than one year, they would not be working with us, then they're called ineffective and they're gone. So it's a very small number at developing. But yes, I would expect some at developing.
Along a different line here, with the proposals, they were talking with the state, in the third item, where it was run in one way or another, depending whether it was student outcomes or it was teacher methodology, I don't remember the term, practice. What safeguards would you have in place that a teacher felt that they were on the cusp, that they couldn't fudge the numbers to improve their student outcomes?
We have two things. Student outcomes is worth 45 percent, and 22 and 1/2 percent, so half of that is based on state testing, which starts again this March. So that testing will be here next spring, or next fall, rather, August, probably even by the end of the school year, we'll have that, those results. And so you can't fudge that unless you go in and commit a crime, you can't do that. The other testing is, we've just purchased the NWEA, which is a standardized test, which we're using three times a year, and teachers' goals would be based on that. So that's another area that, the kids are taking the test, it's electronic, what they put in is what comes out. There's not much you can do about that. The areas that is more difficult is in the non-traditional areas. So art, music, physical education, family consumer science, and all of those things. And so in those areas, you would want teachers to have common assessments that are corrected together and done across, across all classes, taking the same course.
So you're saying that it's not related to classroom performance as much as it is to standardized testing?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That's the way the plan was designed. And this is the current plan, you know, we're looking at it, but that's a requirement, a guideline of the state that's required, is to use testing. And if standardized testing is available, we're required to use standardized testing.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Comments? Okay, we look forward to hearing the questions at our next meeting. I mean, 6.0, 6.1, Futures Education, Mr. Caro and Mrs. Beul are, I'm going to share that one.
The board had asked for regular updates on this report, and so we've, we've done.
Very good. And through you, Madam Chair, we can take it in order and start with finance. And what we did is essentially update the action plan matrix that we submitted to the board for the last update. And so rather than going through the ones that we've already highlighted as completed, excuse me, I'm going to highlight the items that are in progress and provide an update on where we stand on those items towards completion. The first one is item priority number two under finance, and that is develop a new special education student census and cost reporting tool. Explore utilizing new student information system capabilities as appropriate. And that was one of the recommendations from the Futures Education Consulting Group. Interestingly, we discussed this in our finance committee meeting this evening, and what we're doing here to address it, Mrs. Beul and I have had some conversations with our auditor, Colm Resnick, the town auditor, that's also looking at our Board of Ed, does our Board of Ed audit as well, as part of the town's federal single audit requirement. And they've identified some areas as well, based on this recommendation, and have offered us some guidance, and we're looking forward to getting some tools from them that we can incorporate into this as well. So we'd like to get that data, and to give us a little bit more time, we moved the August 8, 2014 date, and left it in progress, because we are working with them to get this new data tool, and we moved that to October 15. Under priority number three, compile and analyze prior year cost report data with Medicaid billing vendor. Schedule a meeting with the State Department of Education to review findings. Work with superintendent, Board of Ed, and local legislators to address special legislation as needed. And so this recommendation, just by way of review, came from Futures, and with the intent that we could possibly go back, like we did with our space standards, and see if there's ways where maybe we could recoup some additional funds and give reimbursement to our community. And to that point, we've asked to move the date up a little bit. We do have our first meeting conference call with Mr. Kevin Chambers of the State Department of Education scheduled for this Thursday. I didn't want to put that date as the end date, because I have a feeling that will be an initial conference call with the State Department of Ed, and we'll likely have additional follow-up calls and potential meetings with them as well to explore, explore that potential. So to that point, we kept it in progress and put an end date of October 15, 2014. Turning to the next page, moving on to transportation, priority number one, integrate Vernon Public School's special education staff and training into annual first-student driver orientation program. We've changed that to completed. That was done at the beginning of the school year. Dr. Conway, Mrs. Beul, our transportation coordinator, we're all part of that initial orientation for new bus drivers, for all bus drivers, along with our bus lot manager, Sonia Hills. And we've also scheduled a six-month refresher. So we identified that particular item as completed, and that will be ongoing. And we have no end date in store, we continue doing that, and we felt that the first meeting was effective and made a difference. The next item is priority number five, under transportation. Analyze current processes and staffing roles responsibilities. Modify staff roles responsibilities to transportation processes and procedures accordingly. Consolidate financial management responsibilities in the business office. That is certainly happening now with our transportation coordinator, Corey's, we're working very closely with Mrs. Beul's staff, primarily Mrs. Smith. And we've already started that transition in moving that, those processes over. So we moved that, we didn't touch that date, we left it as October 24. We're hoping to finish it a little bit sooner than that, and we'll have that updated at the next report for April. And I believe that concludes financing and transportation. Turn it over to Mrs. Beul for organization staffing.
On the next page, the organization staffing section. Number one, this was, the next piece was talking about the organization of the staffing, so reconsidering the viability of the director personnel and human resources. Those were decisions that were made during budget season, and that staffing did not change as a result of the budget process here. Number two, two is also part of that, so it, the stepping of the athletic director did not change. Again, that was a part of the process that was the Board of Ed process, as well as in collaboration with the administration. Number three is also listed as completed. Those were all organizational staffing pieces that really all do tie together. On the next page, 5 through 10, there were no changes. Their organizational, organization roles and responsibilities, we've done, so number two and three were marked as completed. The department, the Pupils Services Department, did spend a significant amount of time reviewing the roles and responsibilities, and that has been distributed out to each of the buildings with clear roles and responsibilities for each of the staff that are associated with Pupils Services Department. So both of those are completed. As discussed at length with, with the board, there were some roles that were added, or responsibilities that were added, to the Levelland Hill School principal's responsibilities. It does list it as VES, but it is Levelland Hill School now, so she is currently finalizing some of the IPs, some functions that she can do within the responsibilities that she currently has. She's also doing some monitoring of IP direct timelines, and also going to be doing some monitoring of the Medicaid reporting piece. On the next page, under professional development, number one, these, a lot of these tie together too. You'll see the descriptions are pretty similar, but they really talk about professional development for some of our paraeducators. We are customizing some training right now to offer to paraeducators, some specific training to preschool paraeducators regarding, regarding communication skills with our preschool students. Talking to the speech department about training some of the specific skills for paraeducators, working one-to-one, and that's just the beginning. It'll be, that'll be ongoing for the year. The next page, 4 through 7, there were no changes. And then the page nine, response to intervention and identification processes, the practices. The first three were not changed. The bottom three, this is all in progress. I think that you can see the timelines for these. The bottom four really are all work that's going to be done this year. We have not, we have not carved out time yet to work on this piece. However, we are pleased that Aspen will allow us the opportunity to be able to document some of the intervention strategies and hopefully be more user-friendly for our SBI process.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Caro and Mrs. Beul?
All right, thank you very much for the report, I appreciate it. I am 6.2, application for CAVE Board recognition award. Thank you. The last two years, the board has applied for and received a Level 1 CAVE Board recognition award. I suggest that the board apply again this year. The board has increased the number of things in Level 2 that have occurred, and the only area that we do not have anything is in Number 3, policy. And so we can certainly look at that, the policy committee may want to look at that. The two things we have to have both of are, the board relates all agenda items to appropriate policies, and the board relates all agenda items to goals, but not to policies. And so that would add another layer, certainly, that we would be able to do. I would suggest that the policy committee discuss that when they meet the week after next. And that policy discussions are a regular part of board meetings, and that doesn't happen as much, because we do have a committee on policy. So I'm not sure, if we were doing the first one, I think that we could share the second one, because the policy committee is certainly, allows people to attend, and the board has lots of discussions at the policy committee, the subcommittee does. So, and certainly, but generally, we're still cleaning up the policies, so it's, they're not having discussions at this point where the board would get engaged in that. So those are the two areas I don't see the board having any evidence that we've grown in those areas. So I would recommend a Level 1, if the board wishes to be considered for the leadership award, it's well deserved.
Do we need a motion on this? Number 2. Anyone want to make a motion? Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, I move that the Board of Education applied for the CAVE recognition award. Yeah, I move that the Board of Education apply for the Cade recognition award.
Is this second, Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Any questions, discussion, comments? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Any understanding? Motion carries. Do you need all of us to sign this? It looks like you need every board member to sign it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll pass that around before, since we have everybody here tonight. Okay. All right, and move on to item 6.3, Board of Education Facilities Committee Report. Mr. Kemp?
The board met, the board met just before this meeting and discussed several issues, three of which would be needing to come before you in the form of a motion. In item 6.3A, there was a, there is a need to go to the town for hopefully a 50% split in what the state does not contribute. And as it says here, the state should contribute 71.79% of the amount and the 54,000 hopefully would go to, be split between the board and the town. The items covered have to do with replacement doors at the center of the school and if I could, the key control system means rekeying exterior doors at the CCTV. At the VCMF is actually an addition of no less than 56 additional cameras within the building. The decorative planters are really those large things that would stop a car from coming at you. We're not just putting planters here and there. It's a little more solid than that, thank you. And the radios would consist of five each additional at each school and that is how you come up with the $192,000. If that explanation helps clarify what that application for the security grant consists of. So if there are no further questions, I'd appreciate a motion.
Mrs. Bush?
I'd like to make a motion that the Vernon Board of Education approve the school's security grant application as presented pending Town Council approval.
Is there a second, Mr. Kemp?
I'll second that.
Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor? Two hands.
6.3B is a request from the American Red Cross to place two trailers on-site at VCMF, which I give you know is the regional shelter designated location and has been used as such in the past. Hurricane Irene is an example. And the idea is to get some of the items that would be necessary to function as a shelter and to do a large operation of feeding at that shelter in place. And they're willing to place two of their supply trailers on the grounds of VCMF and we're simply asking for the board formal approval to do that.
Bush?
I'd like to make a motion that the Vernon Board of Education approve the storage of two American Red Cross trailers at Vernon Center Middle School for the purpose, purposes of supporting our regional shelter operations at that location.
I'll second that.
Are there any questions? Mr. Colina?
Since we're storing it on our property, what about liability concerns if something should happen, a storm or vandalism?
Mr. Colonel?
Well, the Red Cross ensures its product and I hope that would answer any questions or concerns that you would have about liability.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Colonel?
Through you, Madam Chair. Today, to Mr. Kemp's point, we would be looking to execute some form of memorandum of agreement to that effect. And we do have standard terms, conditions, clauses, liability insurance requirements that we have included in all of our contracts for this year moving forward from a risk management standpoint. Nothing that the Red Cross shouldn't already have, I'm sure it does already have in place, but we would be looking to codify that in writing. We have shared this information in concept with our liability, with our LAP liability auto and property insurance broker and the net effect to our premium is basically null. It's something that they would absorb. And Mr. Kemp hasn't given full details of what's inside the trailer, so just add, there's nothing of, that's perishable, there's nothing of significant value in there that we would be worrying about, a significant loss or significant value to insure. So I would support this wholeheartedly, both in my role as business manager, if I may, and my role as emergency risk management director.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf?
I would just make a request of the motioner that there be a friendly amendment that we approved with the stipulation of the insurance meeting, the board's requirements.
I'll accept that. Long amendment.
Same here.
All right, any other question, Mrs. Beal?
Is this agreement forever and always or is it on an annual basis? Is it, is there any point in time that we can decline based on change in needs or right now there's space, maybe there won't be someday?
Well, actually, well, there could be not space outside. It's inconceivable that there wouldn't be space outdoors somewhere for these trailers, but the idea of putting them undercover is to deal with the winter and the snow and so on. If, if they had to be moved out of the way for some reason, they could be. I don't really see a space problem underneath the VCMF, what's the right word for the, that entrance line there?
And if I may just add to Mr. Kemp's saying, we have to execute an annual agreement to provide our shelter as a regional shelter to the Red Cross. That has to be negotiated, executed, signed, processed through the Board of Ed to the town for final review and signature. And so that would happen on an annual basis. If for whatever reason we don't renew that agreement and we're not a regional shelter in location with the Red Cross, then I would assume that those assets would leave.
Okay.
A more comprehensive memorandum of understanding was signed by the mayor and has been signed by other mayors in the past, which is good practice because mayors change. And so what might be a memorandum of understanding that would survive the test of time is just not a good idea, so you want to engage people as people tend to change their roles. And so that's a traditional practice that the Red Cross engages in every situation where they're asking an agency to share in their endeavors. It could be a placement like this, it could be to help serve food, it could be all kinds of different things and they're refreshed, in this case, on an annual basis. So I hope that answers that question.
Any other questions or comments? Here we have a motion on the floor to approve the storage of these two Red Cross trailers. All those in favor? Two hands.
And, I lost the paper, but there's a request from a soccer organization to place a shed at VCMF field. If anybody has that paper, that'd be great, but if they don't...
I was in the pocket, but I mean, if you can make a motion.
Yeah, we discussed it in...
Sorry, gentlemen.
Essentially, it's to approve a new shed at VCMF and it's to contain soccer items.
Where would this shed be owned?
Well, should we make a motion and then we'll have a discussion?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to move that, the Board of Education approve a shed at Vernon Center Middle School.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Anybody have any questions? Lena?
Is that for the Vernon Soccer Club or Storm?
I...
We believe so.
Okay. And the same question applies in terms of liability, materials, maintenance of the shed, that kind of thing.
Mr. Colonel?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, same, same concept for the memorandum of agreement for use of that property for eliminating liability.
Can I ask where this shed will be put? Anybody know?
We talked about it in the facility meeting and the facility meeting said that there are two sheds existing right there. It would be next to the sheds that are there right now. One is a shed for storage, one is a shed for snacks and this would be in that same area. And it would, we were told it would not interfere with any, anything else, including the sledding hill and things like that, so.
So if it's on the side where the sledding hill is?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the shed at VCMF. All those in favor? Two hands. And now we'll move on to item 6.4, Board of Education Finance Committee Report. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Colonel.
Thank you.
We have to speak fast.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to go through every single line item here. We did spend some, quite a bit of time, talking quickly as the chair had said, at our finance committee meeting before this, but there are some items on here that I would like to highlight. And we'll start with the fiscal year 2014 budget updates. First one is the budget summary and closeout status. At this point, we do not have a final, exact figures for the closeout for last fiscal year. We are working collaboratively with the town finance department on some of the variables involved with defining what that, what those exact amounts will be. And that's what I wanted to share with you this evening. We did have a discussion in finance committee, scenario-based, about what we can, what some of our options may be, but at this point, I'd like to share what we're looking at and what some of those variables are. The first of which is we are still waiting for a final payment amount for our fiscal year 14 prescription drug account. And we anticipate that our liability to that account for last year will be in the ballpark of about $35,000. Again, waiting for the final figures from the town finance on that. In addition to that, and I, this is an item that the superintendent, myself, I think we'll be spending some time internally and sharing with the board, is talking more about our pension liability because that has significantly changed over the past several weeks and certainly after our budget has been put in place for the current fiscal year. And there's really a few categories of change that I'd like to share today and then again we can drill down and we need to drill down in more detail when it comes to budget time for next year. The first of which is in your packet and I'm going to draw your attention to Exhibit D, the recommended employer pension contributions. And that is, again, Exhibit D, there's two exhibits while you're turning to that. The first is a page of numbers entitled recommended employer pension contributions, January 1, 2014, which is when these numbers were going to affect, went into effect. And the second is a description, I thought to be the most succinct and easy to understand description of the new GASB 67, 68 requirements. And GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And what they have essentially done here in summary is outline these new changes to calculate our net pension liability. This is something that is driven from the town as far as the calculations go, provided to us in budget time and then we set our budget accordingly. Well, these, these particular changes to GASB 67 and 68 required under these articles have significantly changed those calculations and as a result, and I'm oversimplifying this without getting into actual reviews and morbidity and mortality tables and all the data that we've been looking at behind the scenes, basically filters down to the numbers you see in the first part of the exhibit. And if you, if I could draw your attention to the center of that table, you can see that our Board of Education total at this point, and this was recently provided to us by the town, is currently at $827,747. We budgeted $699,000 in the current fiscal year for that, so that leaves approximately $127,000 in unfunded liability, pension liability for the current fiscal year. And so one of the variables that we're looking at for last year and closing out our fiscal year 14, because these numbers do go back and they're retroactive to the beginning of the tax year, we're looking at allocating a portion or payment from fiscal year 14 to lessen that burden of the unfunded pension liability. I would like to note, in that calculation of 127,38,000 of that would be coming from our cafeteria account, so that's the enterprise account, not a part of the local budget. And that would leave us with approximately 90,000 in unfunded, that portion of 90,000 in the funded local budget portion that we're looking to try to decrease using some of the funds from last year. So there's that variable. The other items regarding the pension plan really deal with our human resources of the town and taking the full administration of the pension plan over and basically cleaning up some of the issues that have happened in years past and looking at how the pension plan was administered. And to that effect, the bottom line is that we're looking at about a $5,000 expense to make catch-up payments on some of the pension plan contributions that need to be made. And so again, that variable expense that we discussed in our finance committee potentially could be made from the fiscal year 14 balance. With those three, the prescription drug final payment, the unfunded pension liability payment against the current year using the last year's funds and the pension liability catch-up based on the way that the plan is being administered now, would leave us with the balance that we would be coming to the board with at the next meeting to share potential recommendations for a combination of either returning some funds to the general fund and obviously would like to make a recommendation or request to deposit some funds from, through the town, through the superintendent to the town and a request for a capital non-recurring account deposit. And again, we don't have the exact figures and we did discuss some scenarios in our finance committee, but we will have more specific figures to share with you at the next board meeting. Okay, moving on to the fiscal year 15 budget updates, I'd like to focus in on the year-to-date budget report and just give you a snapshot of where we are and how it relates to previous years. First, I'm pleased to tell you we are certainly not in a budget freeze. We've actually tipped the scales in the total number of purchase requisitions that we processed in the first two months of the fiscal year. We tipped the scale at over 1,000 purchase requisitions in the first two months totaling expenditures of about 4.5 million in actual expenditures and about 31 million, a little over 31 million in encumbrances, most of which were salary, but the good news is we're making those encumbrances early, which I think helps us better manage our budget throughout the course of the year. One item I just, I would like to mention on, it was an item mentioned in public forum this morning, sorry, this afternoon, and I think it's worth mentioning to the board for clarification and for information sharing. We intentionally decentralized our central supply account this year and provided those funds to the schools in an effort, as Dr. Conaway said, to support our administration and staff. So our administrators are managing those funds. One of the messages that we did provide in a procedure manual this year, a procedure memo this year from my office was the purchasing of supplies was strictly scripted and we did that by design for a couple of reasons. One, we want to leverage the most value for our dollars. And so we limited the purchases to the use of our consortium of bid contracts and master contracts. And for example, we looked and we worked closely with some vendors like WV Mason who provides us with the best possible cost for copy paper and there's really no other reason to use any other vendor unless they can beat that price at this point in time. And so that's just an example of some of the guidance that we've provided. The other item that we're trying to curb is a lot of out-of-pocket expenditures that are being submitted for reimbursement from some of our staff. So I could speculate that it could be very easily interpreted that, you know, don't spend money on supplies. When in fact, the message in great part has been follow a very strict process so that we can leverage our dollars and we want to try to live... strict process so that we can leverage our dollars, and we want to try to limit those reimbursements from our staff where they may not be able to leverage a volume purchase or not pay tax. And so I hope that helps and maybe that's something we can discuss offline with the individual who shared, if there's more specific information. But to that effect, the next item on the agenda that we'll be looking for the board's action on would be budget transfers and amendments. We only have one budget amendment to present for board action, and that is to transfer $148 from our contingency account to our insurance account. Reason being is our student, the voluntary student insurance premium that we received this year was $148 over what we had budgeted. We budgeted $10,000, it's $10,148. We discussed that in a little bit more detail at finance committee. It was a good budget number to use based upon our trend use of that account, the number and the total amount of premium dollars in actual payments that the company had paid, so we're just a little bit over, and we're looking for the board's approval of that budget amendment this evening.
Mr. Wolf?
Make motion to approve that transfer.
Is there a second?
Sir?
Mr. Blomman? Any questions, comments, concerns, all in favor? Janice?
Thank you very much. The next item that I'd like to jump to is the tuition revenue summary, and then after that, looking for a board motion on the proposed tuition rate increase. This is the time of year where we have to present this by board policy to, to the board for any changes to the tuition. So I thought we should, we should first start and look at big picture and look at where we currently stand with tuition revenue and how it relates to our projected revenue estimates in the town. Just by way of highlighting it, our ag-ed tuition is set by the State Department of Education, and the, the good news with our ag-ed department is, as you may know, they've been aggressively marketing the program in hopes of increasing total enrollment, which we're starting to see. The bad news is, is that the state has reduced the tuition per student, which again, we have no control over in setting that tuition rate, by $377 per student. So if you look at our number of enrolled students times, which is 32, times $377, we're already starting with $12,064 less than where we were based on last year's tuition amount. So we have some ground to make up there in relation to our projected revenue estimates for the town. One area where we hope to make that up is that we understand that there will be at least one, maybe two special ed students entering into the VoE program, and that's something that we did not see any revenue in last year, so we're hoping to see some ground made up there. And then across the board, other than in our Next Step program, we're looking to increase our tuition rates by 2%. And I would like to point out in Exhibit H, you'll see the numbers there, whether it's the current year and the proposed rate increase, it was noted, and it is a correction that needs to be made for our kindergarten, now that we've moved to a full-day kindergarten under the 2014, 15, 2% increase, that, that number of 5,038 does need to be doubled to, to 10,000 accordingly, and change. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to ask. Now, I know I'm giving an overview, but the, the ask is for the board to approve a 2% increase in the line items where we can, with the exception of Next Step, where we felt that we would keep that at level funding to ensure that we would get participation in the program, and an increase may, may diminish that. And again, we cannot touch the VoAg tuition rate that is set by the state.
Mr. Stansfield?
Do we have an explanation for the state of why they decreased the VoAg tuition rate? I mean, it's a significantly lower amount than our own out of, our non-resident student rate. So my concern is, you know, are we putting ourselves in a, or is the state putting us in a bad spot with that?
Thank you for that question. And in fact, that's one of the items through Madam Chair that we're hoping to bring up on our conference call Thursday with Mr. Chambers, and I've also mentioned it to Mr. Harold Mackin when we spoke with him about the grant, but when we have that information, we will share that with you. But I, I would like to know as well, I have not got the definitive answer yet as to why.
Mr. Wolf?
I make the motion that we approve the 2% increase for the accounts specified by Mr. Carr.
Sir?
Mr. Blomman? Any questions, comments, concerns? No? All votes in favor? Janice?
Thank you very much, through Madam Chair, I'll move forward. There's quite a bit of a...
Wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Chambers.
Mike, you referred to the change of $12,000, and part of the reason why the, the totals are so much lower, but really, that can't possibly account for the fact that at the beginning of this chart, there were $558,000 coming in across the tuition line, and currently it's at $218,000. So according to this, there are 32 students, and I, and I guess the, the concern is the rapid drop in the, the amount of revenue in the tuition line and what we might be able to do about that. Now, you said there are two special ed students that may come in, but I don't see in any one year that, that amounts to, I'm going to just guess, $50,000 might be a, a practical figure to estimate, but at what point are we not going to be in business in the VoAg program? I mean, how much more can we afford to lose here and still run it? That's a question.
Mr. Carr?
Thank you, through Madam Chair. You're right, the numbers have gone down significantly over the course of time, and that's why we presented them here. We're hoping that, and I think Mrs. Fitzpatrick and Mr. Rocket are working very hard to market the program, and I think this is definitely a call to action, and they've, I think they've risen to that occasion, but we need to see the numbers, you know, and we need to see the total enrollment. There may be additional reasons for, for special education tuition, as far as why those numbers have gone down in VoAg. I, I don't have that information right now, but I can certainly follow up with, with staff and get back to you through the superintendent.
Mr. Stansfield?
I guess my question would be, through Madam Chair, more students are great, but if the students were getting, were getting at a, at a reduced rate, then are we digging ourselves a bigger hole by recruiting more students? And don't get me wrong, I love the VoAg program, I came to Rockville on the VoAg program, but if our current out-of-town rate is almost double that of what the VoAg reimbursement is, then by recruiting more students, aren't we creating a wider gap?
Through you, Madam Chair. It's a good point. From a financial standpoint alone, could we break even just by the reduction in the, the total tuition? You know, maybe, you're right. You know, so we, we could see more students coming in and still not being able to hit our revenue estimates or our revenue projections needed to support the program and to meet those projections for the town. I'd like to do more analysis. I, I think it's still early in the year. The reason why we presented this now, I wanted to present this now, is because it's something that I'm seeing that's raising red flag, but I think, I think it deserves and warrants more analysis, and we need to report back with, when we have more information as far as where our enrollment is, and maybe get some answers from the state as to why the tuition has gone down. The other side is, there may be an opportunity to make up some of that tuition in additional grant dollars that the State Department of Education offers to the VoAg program, and that's, that's a strategy that we've seen, and we've taken advantage of in the past as well, but I, I don't know what those numbers are yet, it's too early in the fiscal year to, they haven't been released from the State Department of Ed yet, or even if they're going to have that, those grant dollars available this year.
Any other questions on that? Okay, Mr. Carr, I would like you to continue.
Thank you. Just to highlight, and we're going to be jumping in quite a bit, I think it's worth noting that we negotiated and awarded through a competitive bidding process the BCMS wireless network project. That contract was negotiated, executed, and the first payment was made in the first week in, first week of August with a due date of eight weeks from the date of execution of the contract. So exciting news there, and we look forward to reporting back on the progress of that particular project. The next item that is on the agenda for an action item for the board, but there is no, there is no reference to an exhibit in the handout, is something that we've talked about in the facilities committee, and that's to correct an airflow problem with the library. Original estimates that we had, and we spent quite a bit of time working with the town and, and bringing in some of the consultants, the contractors, the clerks of the works, the HVAC system installers for some of the bond project work that was done in the past to really examine what the issue was with some of the stale air issues that have been reported in our library at the high school. And our original figures were scary, at over $100,000 to repair it, but interesting enough, and I think it's worth reporting, our own HVAC technician looked at it, studied it, and came back with a solution that we vetted through different vendors to make sure it was feasible and correct for our, for our school environment, and we're asking in, in this request tonight for the board's support, to request up to $20,000, nowhere near the original estimates that we had received to correct the work. And the reason for the drastic change, essentially, is that our HVAC technician found a solution, that's a viable solution, by going, working on the roof instead of working through the walls to correct the airflow issues that we're, we're experiencing in the library. So we're looking for your support. I also think it's warranted to note, we do not have an updated balance of our capital non-recurring account, we're working with the town finance department to get that, but at this point, I project that we have about $30,000 or so dollars, thereabouts, in the account, so up to $20,000 should be within our available funds in that account.
Is anyone interested in making a motion on that? Mr. Blomman?
Make the motion that we approve the funds for the capital non-re, request for a capital non-recurring account to repair the problems in the air systems at Rockville I spoke.
Is there a second? Mr. Stansfield? Any questions, comments, discussion?
Not for a particular amount?
He said up to $20,000.
Up to $20,000.
I included that.
He did say that.
I'm sorry.
I was kind of mumbled a little bit through, so I'm a little tired.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Janice?
Thank you. Jumping ahead under facilities to the natural gas conversion, an update on that. That project is moving forward per schedule, and we'll, we will have all of our net, all of our school buildings converted to natural gas per our agreements. This is with net, with Yankee Gas. Copies of those agreements that we negotiated are included for your reference, and this finance packet is an item that we did discuss and informed the board of in a prior meeting, but I wanted you to know from a financial standpoint, when you look at the, the total cost of conversion and looking at what the equivalent is for the cost of natural gas to what we budgeted for price per gallon of, of heating oil, we're looking at about $1.40 as an equivalent for, for the use of natural gas versus the $3.35 that we budgeted for in our budget. And so you'll see in, in a, in a future finance report, a transfer or amendment to transfer the monies from our heating oil account over to our natural gas accounts. I wanted to inform the board ahead of time that we would be doing that to support this project, and at the end of the day, even factoring in a rough winter like we had this year, we should see a net savings in our natural gas account at the end of this fiscal year. And so I, I don't have the exact numbers, but we're looking at, could be upwards of close to $70,000 to $100,000 in savings in that account this year. Again, it's a little early to, to put out any hard and fast numbers based upon how the winter's going to go, but at this point, that's good news to share, and we wanted to get that information to the board as soon as possible. Under risk management, the Board of Ed has been working with staff, with the committee, both the Health and Safety Committee and a School Emergency Operations Plan Committee led by Mr. Byrd to update our school emergency operations plan. This is a requirement from the State Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security to have submitted by October 1st. This is a plan that we've put in place and through collaboration with town officials, actually needs to be signed off, not only by the board, superintendent, staff, but also by several town officials as well in order for it to be considered valid by the state. And so we will be sharing that information with you in a little bit more detail in a future meeting, but that is something that we're working on and working towards submitting for October. And then briefly, a few updated items. The copier-office machine bid, we're actively negotiating with the town. In fact, we met with the highest-scoring vendor today. It's almost ironic that my finance packet happens to be almost 140 pages, you know, if you look at it front and back, and I'm counting how much paper we utilized today, so I'm probably one of the biggest offenders, and I apologize for that, but we're looking at all of those figures, how much we spend on paper, how much we spend on consumables, how much we spend on click charges, and I'll be glad to share that, that data with anyone who may be interested. And our goal here is to save at least 10% with the award of this contract in collaboration with the town, and I'm certainly hoping for much more than that. But I, I'm excited to report that we're going to be moving towards document stations, file and be printing, that'll be tied into each individual employee's ID badge, and a reduction in a lot of those consumables and costs for repair. And so more to follow about that. And the last thing is the fiscal year ending 2014 for our food and nutrition services. They end of the year with $17,017 in the enterprise account, and that's the closeout number for fiscal year 14. And on a positive note, in addition to that, we included a copy of the letter as a follow-up to communications to the board with your approval. We've offered the free breakfast and lunch program, started doing that at Maple Street School under the USDA's community eligibility provision, starting this school year. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? This is the small packet that we received.
I have two items that I was curious about, the retirement. Haven't, have we looked into consolidating with the town? I know it had been talked about, we really had success when we have worked with the town to try to consolidate. Is there a reason we have not yet gone with the town for our retirement to help us from having these deficits?
If I may, through Madam Chair, to start, as far as the pension goes, that is purely what, we're working collaboratively with the town. The town manages the pension plan, and that may not, that may not have been communicated before, but I mean, the town is the pension plan administrator, so we, we really follow the town's lead and take their guidance and advice in how that gets managed with our employees here. And so I, I think we're there when it comes to the pension plan administration. The retirement accounts, from a board perspective, from a payroll perspective, employee relations perspective, we have expanded the list of our 403B vendors. We encourage our employees to take advantage of those accounts, and we're also exploring, we haven't offered yet, but looking at Roth IRAs as a, as a vehicle for some employees who may qualify as part of this, the same plan that the, the town vendor for the pension plan could, could offer as well. So I think we're there when it comes to collaboration with the town as far as the pension plan and some of the retirement products.
Thank you. My second question has to do with the copiers and the amount of paper that we're getting. As you can see right here, I do not have but five or six pieces of paper right here. I have everything electronically. I, I see everybody else's packet was about this thick. I'd like to see our board move to a more electronic situation when it comes to paper, and I think the savings that we would see from that, just from the Board of Education and all the packets that everybody has to put out, would make a little difference in the tree population. So I would like to see that start happening as well, and I'd like to see our board work to get to that point, so we'll be electronic. And I've been doing this two-plus years, maybe three, and I have everything stored right on here, and I'd like to see our board do that, and I think that would help in our, in our copy service as well. Soapbox off.
You want to buy me a computer?
Right. I'd be happy to. I know the town council uses the Chromebooks. They, they use them for other things as well, and then they just roll in this little cart of Chromebooks, and they have someone already have them... of Chromebooks, and they have someone already have them set up, ready to go, loaded, and everything's right there. And if you go to your home, I would assume everybody electronically has some way to communicate on a computer. You can review everything on the computer, Chromebooks or something would be here for us, and it could also be used for other reasons as well, because you just, there's some way to do this. But I would highly recommend that we look into that to try to save on all the copies that I see. So that's just what I've been doing. I think it's been successful for me.
Mr. Coleman?
I have a friend who's on another local Board of Education, and they went paperless in recent years, and they've actually more than covered the cost of the Chromebooks or whatever product they use to display in the terms, in terms of the amount of paper saved or the dollars overall, so it's been a positive. So I agree with Mrs. Bush that we might want to look into that a little bit further.
Thank you. Mr. Picaro?
Through your matter chair, to your point, just to define, maybe set the benchmark for where we start, certainly a performance measure on the new copier contract, and it's something that we're looking at. We spent $46,000 on paper last year. $12,193 reams of paper is what we went through. And so, you know, a part of the copier contract alone is to reduce the number of copies, and a lot of copies could just be, you know, you print it, but then it just stays at the printer, it gets printed out, and ends up in a recycle bin. It's just sometimes times of the essence, you know, as a teacher, and other times, you know, do you really need to print it? Can you just transmit it, you know, electronically? With this new copier contract, we will be able to do that in a much more efficient fashion. So we're hoping to see a reduction in copies, we're hoping to see a reduction in stranded copies, and we're hoping to see a reduction in fax transmissions frankly, because everything will be linked to the individual regardless of where they are, so it's not just based on their location, wherever they may be stationed, it's going to be available anywhere in the district.
Good. It's all moved to the 22nd century, maybe.
Any other questions? Mrs. Stansell?
I was hoping that in Mr. Picaro's report, when he addressed the security competitive grant update, that I could make a comment, but since he didn't address it, can I make a comment anyway?
Sure.
Okay. The board, with the benefit of grant dollars, made significant changes at three of our schools to, in an effort to upgrade safety and better protect our staff and students. And I think it's important to reaffirm that there are policies and procedures in place, as well as the physical changes, that there are policies and procedures in place in all of the schools to better protect the school community. And I think we need to be sure that all of those are being followed very strictly, and assure the public as well that that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anything else on that? All right, we'll move on to item 6.5, superintendent's evaluation.
I'd make a motion that we go over to and do the 7.0, 8.0, and then enter into executive session to discuss item 6.5 with no anticipated action coming out of the executive session.
Is there a second on that? Mr. Bush?
Second.
Are there any discussion comments? All in favor? Janice. Okay, then we'll do item 7.0 through your table, update the Board of Education calendar. Does anyone have any questions or comments or changes to the calendar? No? All right, 8.0, opportunity for questions from the press. Nobody's here. All right. All right, now we'll move into executive sessions, superintendent's evaluation.